Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and yeah, really. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's planning and zoning meeting for the city of Des Moines. This evening is June 21st, 2012. Just to get a few of the rules and procedures out of the way this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is a final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to city council. You'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening, after presentation by staff, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker, allowed a maximum of five minutes, although everybody knows I give some additional time anyway. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, and there are three of those, will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval. Thank you. In accordance with the recommendation of the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines is pleased to, yeah, pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. My glasses are failing or something. Assisted listening devices are also available in the council chambers. Planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7. For customers with that service, a broadcast is streamed live in real time on the city of Des Moines website at www.demoynggov.org. You need to check the watch live list. Of course, you won't be here then. It's wonderful to be here. Kathy, do we have a quorum? A quorum being present? Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. And we have two abstentions. Jack and I are abstaining because we weren't, obviously weren't here.
We moved the motion. We moved it.
Oh, nobody moved it. We moved it on our own. Am I pushing this fast? The council, the consent items are, city council initiated request for determination as to whether Ingersoll Grand Commercial Area Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item tonight? In opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission?
I have some questions.
Right there.
If you have a question.
Well, I think if we just, if you just have one question.
I have some questions.
Oh, you got a lot of questions?
I have.
All right, all right. Well, okay. Several questions is not a, okay, we got it. All right, we're going to go ahead and pull that and we'll put that on first. City initiated, city council initiated request for review and approval of a site plan Principal Park Clubhouse Expansion. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wants to remove that? Okay. The third one is request from Hubble Realty Company represented by Steve Nieber.
Nieber.
Nieber. You know, I will along to keep me in, keep me in line here. Nieber, for review and approval of a site plan for 1440 loss under design guidelines for multiple family and design guidelines with downtown overlay district on the property. Is there anyone here in opposition to that item tonight? Seeing none, is there one, anyone on the commission? Likewise, seeing none. Are there any other items we'd like to move to consent?
I'd like to see what people think about number four.
I have a question about number four.
All right, apparently that's not going to work. How about with respect to number eight?
Eight.
Number eight and number 10.
And number 10. Both are requests from the city council. One is a request from the Blank Park Zoo Foundation to rezone property in the vicinity of 7401 Southwest 9th Street. Is there anyone here to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question.
On that one?
That is part of the district of the regular, I believe, some kind of council that controls the dust that crashes.
That is correct.
This district will be that way forever. They have an option, the zoo had an option at all, $3,000 a year to do that. Seems like a lot of money to do it forever.
Well, I've talked, just to give you some background, a portion of the area being rezoned to PUD is within the Fort Des Moines National Landmark area. And being such, they're not allowed to have any paving or any permanent surface for the overflow parking that's within that area. So their really, their only, excuse me, only option would be to have a gravelled surface. So we've recommended that gravelled surface be treated annually to control the dust. And I've talked to the applicant's attorney and engineer and they said the zoo is in agreement with spraying it once a year. So their other option is just to not spray it and to leave it there.
But it would violate the air quality requirements.
Right.
What does this chemical have, what kind of effect does that have on the ground?
It should have minimal, there's more than one kind of treatment. The most popular is the calcium chloride that, it's used pretty commonly. I don't know that there's.
I have some questions.
We lived in the country for a long time and our, yeah, and we did use that for our road. Oftentimes, it seemed to affect nothing and we had an open stream down the hill and it did not seem to affect anything, so.
But is there any studies or anything on that?
It's basically, it has to be a dust reapproved surface by the city engineer. So really, the decision on what's an appropriate chemical to spray in that is really in the jurisdiction of the city engineer, not the planning commission.
What do you think? Do you want it removed or?
No, I have.
Is there a motion to move number nine on? Well, first of all, before I do that, is there anyone here in the audience that wants to speak in opposition to number nine?
Number eight.
Eight, I'm sorry, number eight. Opposition to eight, okay. Anybody have question about which one they're here on? So we don't have any, okay. All right, number eight, we have a motion?
Move number eight to consent.
Okay, surely. And with respect to number 10, request from the Des Moines Airport Authority represented by Edgar Hansel to review and approve of a site plan Airport Economy Parking Lot. Any discussion on that? Is there anyone in? Do I?
As long as the landscaping is proper, I can't see any.
Okay. So anyone here to speak in opposition to that item tonight? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to move that on? Okay. So we've moved eight and 10, is that right? All those in favor of moving eight and 10 to the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. Acclamation, Kathy. Oppose? None?
We don't even need a motion to remove one.
Yeah, well, I don't even, we don't even need a motion to remove one. CJ just asked, just asked it, one be removed, so that's, that's a done deal. If somebody in the audience would have asked for that, they'd have gotten the same thing. All right, so we're moving on, is there a motion? Yeah, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and that's items two, three, eight and 10? All right, join in the movement. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Bert, I understand you have item number six, is there?
Item number six is the request for rezoning at 1100 Euclid Avenue. They've asked for a continuance to the July 19th meeting.
All right. July 19th?
Yeah.
Which is our next meeting?
Correct.
Was that number six?
Number six.
Lazarus.
Number six. Is there anyone here on item number six to speak on item number six? Seeing none? Is there a motion? Okay, great. All those in favor of continuing item number six to July 19th, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. Okay, going back to item number one. City council initiated request for determination as to whether Ingersoll Grand Commercial Area Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. Mike, are you doing this one?
Just a brief overview of what's in front of you tonight. As you may be well aware, there's been quite a bit of work. Ted was one of the people that worked with 10 neighborhood associations in the business interests along Ingersoll Corridor to do a revitalization strategy for, for the corridor. One of the recommendations in that, in that proposal, and ultimately about a year ago, the council directed staff to go ahead and prepare an urban renewal plan for the district. But, so a year ago, they directed us to do that and then it also ended up in, in the revitalization strategy plan also. But this urban renewal plan, a primary component of that is that it authorizes the use of tax increment financing along corridor. The plan has in it a wide range of uses that could be funded with TIF, including planning activities. And obviously, the, a primary component that's identified in the plan would be the use of TIF to help fund possibly some streetscape improvements along the corridor. In the revitalization strategy, they noted that the 28th to 31st Street project took close to five years to get constructed and in place. And if they move three blocks at a time on the streetscape from 42nd to 15th, we will probably be replacing sections of the, of the streetscape before they get that entirely built. So they, there's a desire to have an aggressive or a enhanced schedule for construction of the streetscape. This does not obligate the city to fund that project. Any use of TIF would be subject to a separate agreement and separate consideration and vote by the city council on whether or not to utilize TIF for, for a project. So this just makes it available. I think in the plan, you'll note that there's about a 1% growth rate estimated in this plan for TIF growth or the incremental growth. And basically, you know, I think there's been some discussion of, is that too conservative or not? I know that in the revitalization strategy, there were questions about was that too, were the projections in there too generous? And the reality is, it doesn't really matter whether they're too conservative or too aggressive. The reality is whatever the real increment is, is, that comes to fruition, the city council, in my opinion, would not likely be issuing bonds unless there was a, a proven revenue stream to pay back the debt service on those bonds. So that's what the, the Ingersoll Revitalization Committee's been told repeatedly and that is the intent of, of the urban renewal plan. So with that, staff is recommending that it is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. And once again, I just want to stress that any utilization or allocation of TIF revenue is subject to future, future considerations by the city council on a case-by-case basis.
CJ? Now get to you, Jack.
I just had some questions on this plan. First of all, I, I see that grant has been added to this urban renewal plan and it originally was just the Ingersoll Corridor. And in doing that, they've added some fairly nice neighborhoods, which they now say are blighted and slum areas. I just have a real problem with that, calling Greenwood Historic and Salisbury Oaks blighted and slum areas. I mean, we've got other areas in the city that if you want to talk about that stuff, we should be talking about those areas. The other thing is Mike's comment, and I hear this not only from Mike but from others, the city has no commitment in this. The city does have a commitment in this because in a TIF, you're taking money away from other projects that could be funded from the total city and designated it to one property or to one project. And it also goes on to say in numerous places that the city will commit to aggressively seeking federal and Polk County funds to do this project. I, I just think this is a little aggressive and I really, and I don't know what the people who live in Salisbury Oaks or Greenwood Historic feel about their neighborhoods being called slum and slighted, but, and blight areas, but I certainly would take offense if it was my neighborhood.
Could you point those sections to me in the report?
Well, when you sent us, C1 is where it says general background.
Because there are different, under the state code for establishment of urban renewal districts, there are different criteria which urban renewal projects can be developed. The, the 20-year, there's restrictions on use for residential development and if any residential project is funded, it limits TIF to a 10-year timeframe. The.
And that's a million dollar, over a million dollar commitment. It's a million two.
Right. Ultimately, the, okay, the section in C1 specifically is noting the, it says that the state code identifies there to be one of two things found. It says one or more of the following conditions. So you have slum and blighted areas within the area or an economic development. This plan is really an economic development application, not a slum and blight application. So that's really just referencing to the state code section. It's not calling the neighborhoods adjoining that slum and blighted. The downtown, the downtown plan, for example, is a, is a, had a, the original TIF plan that was done for downtown was based on slum and blight, but this plan is not alleging that. This is an economic development under, under the state code.
Okay, and then it goes on to say in another place that the tax money will not be used for residential housing or development. If it's not going to be used in neighborhoods for residential housing, why are we including that in the TIF territory or the TIF area?
The boundary that, that is, is shown on here was just any property that had frontage on Ingersoll or Grand Corridor. So some of those properties actually do extend quite a distance off of, off of those corridors. I mean, there's some very deep lots along Grand Avenue, for example. But the reality is, we have to choose a legally describable boundary, so we follow the lot lines rather than just arbitrarily setting a boundary halfway or a third of the way or two-thirds of the way across a lot line and establishing an artificial boundary. We just chose to follow the, the lot lines of parcels fronting on those corridors.
Salisbury Oaks does not front Ingersoll.
The neighborhood boundary, the properties, there are properties along Grand Avenue that have frontage along there.
I'm talking about Ingersoll. This is an Ingersoll project.
This is an Ingersoll and Grand and the council directed it to include Grand also. So that's why the plan has been drafted in this form.
Oh, I didn't.
So the, the reality is, is that there aren't really streetscape improvements proposed along Grand, but I think what the plan tries to recognize is there is a significant amount of density of multifamily residential that exists along the Grand Avenue Corridor. And it is because of that density along Grand Avenue Corridor that you have the commercial uses that you do along Ingersoll. It's a symbiotic relationship between density and the amount of commercial use that's on that corridor. The corridor would not be as strong as it is today without that density. So in the planning efforts that Ted worked on for the revitalization strategy, they brought together neighborhoods that butt both Ingersoll and Grand and brought them to the table to discuss revitalization strategies. And this was one of the things that they, they had supported. There was, at the public meetings that they had on those, there was virtually unanimous support that people wanted to see the Ingersoll streetscape completed along the entire corridor. And there was, there was general support for use of TIF for, for part of that funding. There will be multiple sources that will have to be utilized to fund that project, though. So, once again, this plan does not allege slum and blight. That's reference to a state code that you have to choose one or more and this one is really an economic development thing. And if they, it can go for 20 years, but if they fund any residential construction project, it limits the use of TIF to 10 years. So they would absolutely want to avoid funding a residential project with TIF on this. It's, it's very similar to what we did in Beavordale, for example, with the TIF that was, was done along the Beaver Avenue Corridor.
Jack?
Not wanting to get into a lengthy discussion of tax increment financing or the choices that have been made by legal counsel and characterization of this and that, it looks to me like we have one issue to decide and that is whether the proposal is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan.
Correct.
And the meat of that analysis is that pages six and seven of this work, if I get the picture here.
I think that's right.
Meaning, if I understand this, is the proposal such that it's going to change the character of the neighborhood as defined in the 2020 Character Plan in existence with respect to the designation Significant Corridor, Design Integrity Corridor, Scenic Corridor, and Gateway Corridor, which seem to be the major features of these neighborhoods?
That's right.
Am I on that?
I think you're right.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have, the, the plan that we see on page, what's it?
I guess first insert, isn't it?
Yeah. Is this, is the whole rectangle included in the urban renewal plan?
That would be the proposal, yes.
Including the lower right-hand corner?
The dark.
That portion goes to Martin Luther King, is that what you're talking about there?
Well, it's the lower right-hand corner.
The dark boundary would be the perimeter of there.
Oh, okay, then that answers my question.
Yeah, it's not the whole layout.
Right, right.
Well, it's just the, yeah, okay. Any other questions, discussion? Do we have a motion?
Is there a staff recommendation on it?
We recommend it is in conformance with the 2020 Community Character Plan.
I move staff.
Okay. Everybody understands the motion? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. One in opposition. Moving on to item number five?
Four.
Oh, four, I've got four circled. I thought we were gonna, it didn't happen, did it? Ah, wishful thinking.
Yes.
It's a request from Iowa CVS Pharmacy LLC and FEP Acquisitions Fund II LLC. 209 Euclid Avenue represented by Thomas Lowe for vacation and conveyance of the north-south alley between Second Avenue and Third Street from Euclid Avenue to a point 250 feet north, joining properties owned by Denny Elwell Family LLC, Fred Spazello, John Campbell, and the city of Des Moines. Bert, are you presenting on this one?
Yes, I am.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, first I'll point out, you have a revised staff report in front of your chairs who should have had at the start of the meeting. They just had a new condition number two added to the previously published.
This is a, this is a condition that staff added?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just an oversight in the original draft that went up. The item, as you mentioned, is a request for a vacation in advance of a 300-foot-long segment of alley right-of-way that bisects the block at the corner of Second Avenue and Euclid Avenue. The intent would be to create a new development parcel on this southern portion of the block. The condition that was added was the requirement that an access easement be provided to provide an outlet for that remaining segment of alley. This is just a closer picture of the segment being vacated. And this is the current working sketch. This by no means is a site plan. This just gives you a general idea of how the site could be developed in the future. This just shows a CVS Pharmacy building in the middle of the site with parking along the south and east sides along Second Avenue and Euclid Avenue. This shows the access easement to, that would get access to the remaining segment of the alley would show that people could either exit, exit out to Second Avenue or over here to Third Street. This is just a photo of the alley and today you can see it is paved and then this is looking at it from Euclid Avenue. And then the consent map, we had just cards and support come back. Staff has recommended approval of the vacation subject to some conditions. One, they provide easements for any utilities. Two, that they provide easement for the traffic outlet for the remaining segment of alley right-of-way. And three, any conveyance of the property shall be made subject to these conditions that all buildings constructed on the development parcel should be constructed of durable masonry, brick, and stone materials. And B, conformance with an approved site plan concept by the city council, which demonstrates. One, adequate pedestrian routes from the primary building entrances to the adjoining public sidewalk system. Two, it adheres to all landscaping setbacks, open space and plant material, minimum standards. And three, provides an enhanced urban edge within the setback areas along Second Avenue and Euclid Avenue to include decorative walls and fencing at a pedestrian scale. So you showed this earlier, this is just the general concept, it's not by any means the final plan, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
That's going to come back to us.
That would come back to city council.
The council would review the site plan?
Yeah, the site is already zoned C2, which allows commercial development by right.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chair. Bert, my first question is, go back to the site map, would you please, within the aerial? Yeah. Where is the Highland Park Commercial Historic District within this?
It's over on Sixth Avenue, which would be about three and a half blocks to the west.
How far does it come along on Euclid Avenue?
Well, pretty much the entire segment between Sixth Avenue and Second Avenue is commercial of some nature.
That wasn't my question, though. I know it's commercial. My question was if that court, how far the historic district extends along Euclid Avenue to the east?
I'm not sure how far that.
That's, that's my concern. My understanding, and I'm, I'm very willing to be corrected, is that the parcel we're looking at is within the historic district. Can someone contradict me?
No, and that was my understanding as well, well.
I don't know, it's, are you referring to a national historic district or a local, it's not a local historic district?
No, I don't, that's, that's true, but my question is whether it's a national, a National Register of Historic Places historic district. That's, that's a question that I have. The other question along that line is that if that's the case, what if any action does the Des Moines Historic Preservation Commission need to do in connection with this project? If it were?
If it's designated as a national landmark, then the Historic Landmark Review Board would have to.
Local landmark designation goes to the historic mission. The National Historic District is not reviewed by our Historic Commission. All that designation does is if there's demolition of a structure that uses any federal or, or city dollars, then there's, then there's an opportunity for review. But if there's no federal dollars associated with the project, we're, we're not, there is no review that I'm aware of.
I would direct staff to explore the status of this in terms of its potential National Register listing, just for clarification and to make sure that nothing goes wrong as far as that's concerned.
Sure.
Are you wanting to continue? Are you wanting to continue this, Will, with that?
I, I would, I have another question, too, if you don't mind, or I mean, if you want to continue it, that would-
No, go ahead.
Could you show the site plan, please? The, the concern I have with the site plan, and perhaps this should be talked about at another time if it comes, when it comes forward, but my concern is that this is a suburban plan. Right now, the commercial buildings have zero setback from Euclid and also from Sixth Avenue. The, the staff says, this is similar, and talking about the plan, staff says this is the plan, the proposed plan, which is the one we're looking at, is similar to commercial properties with a zero setback building character. This is similar to solutions that were derived for the Dolls Grocery Store development on Ingersoll Avenue. Well, that's not the case. You're talking about, instead of having a zero setback on this plan, at least as I read it, you're having parking there, and you're having parking along Sixth Avenue. So, I think you're sending to the developer a real mixed signal.
If, if I could possibly address that, the site is zoned C2 currently, and the C2 has a required setback of 25 feet for the building in a C2 zoning district. So, if they're in compliant, full compliance with the existing zoning, there's, there's limited ability to require or force them to move a building out to the street. What we've talked about in the site plan component of this, recognizing the existing zoning C2, is trying to get an urban edge along, along the building, not a building at the, at the property line, but at least an urban edge along the parking. And the reference to the Dolls was in areas where we had the parking that was out towards the property line. They ended up putting in a, like a wrought iron fence along the edge, and their landscaping along the edge of that to create, create a, a buffer, if you want to call it that, or a, an edge to the development. And also, the staff rec talks about the pedestrian access to the building, that's, it's obviously very critical. And, and ultimately, you know, the council in this, because of the alley vacation, is requesting final review of the site plan. So, to this point, my understanding is the neighborhood association, I think there were letters in the, in the, in the packet of support for the request, and the existing zoning is C2. So, we, we are somewhat limited in, in being able to force a, a building to be located out at the, out the street. Right now, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment to get relief to the required setback to do that.
Mike, what zoning is difference on this property is there from the one in Beavertale where the Ace Hardware went in? Which is a very similar situation.
I can't speak to when the Ace Hardware was built on the site and what the zoning was at that time, and whether they had, I, I think it's C, C1 or C2 there.
C2.
But they may have gone to the Board of Adjustment and requested relief at that time, but there's nothing that requires the applicant here to go to the Board of Adjustment and seek relief.
The disappointment with this is that we are trying to make the city of Des Moines something distinctive from the suburbs, and one of the things that makes the city distinctive is that we have buildings that are built up to the right-of-way, which gives a metropolitan urban feeling to the environment. This makes us distinctive, it helps calm traffic, it's much more attractive in a city situation, and then we see something like this that flies in the face of what we're trying to do.
I think, I, other than having the applicant address any additional questions, I don't know if there are other questions on it.
Bert, I, I have a question, if nobody else has any questions. Does anybody else have questions? My concern is with respect to the alley. We're gonna cut the alley off, is that my understanding? I mean, I'm looking at your diagram here, and this, I assume that's to the north, I don't see the, the compass in there, but, but I'm, I'm assuming that's to the north. So, the alley to the north would just dead-end right into the building?
No, there's, this shaded area here is the access easement they're proposing that would allow traffic-
Okay, so it's gonna come in then to the park, I don't know, that's really not a parking lot, but into the, into the access area at the back?
Right, it would, you know, vehicles can either exit out to Second Avenue or to Third Street.
Okay, all right. I'm just, I'm just worried about deadheading it, and then suddenly you're driving down the alley and whoops, we got a problem. So, okay, all right. Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, could they please come forward, give us your name and address?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Chris Posey, I'm an attorney, my office address is 317 Sixth Avenue here in Des Moines. Represent the applicants. With me also is Ann Walter, who is with the development entity trying to assemble the site for the CVS store. She may be able to answer questions if you have them in particular. I did want to present to you the neighborhood recommendation, which was in support of the request as, as submitted. We do agree with the staff recommendation and comments, and I will mention to you that we had a very well neighbor, very well-attended neighborhood meeting at the Highland Park Senior Community Act, I guess it was the Senior Center, apologize if I don't know the name, but it's in the, the Park Fair Shopping Center, and quite a few people that attended. And one gentleman had raised the issue that Mr. Page was raising about moving the site, making it more in compliance with what would be NPC district zoning regulations, and with all the people in the room, no one then applauded that idea. One gentleman who was a patient of Dr. Campbell, Dr. Campbell has a dental practice in the middle of this block that's going to be relocated. In fact, that was, one of the proposed sites he was gonna go to was item six on your agenda tonight, which we've continued, because Dr. Campbell is now looking at a property at the neighborhood's preference at Sixth and Madison. Long story short, at the end of our meeting, one gentleman stood up and said that he was very much in support of the plan as submitted, liked what we were doing, and that broke out in applause within the room. And hence, we've got this letter from the association, which supports the request. I certainly appreciate what the, the commission is saying with regard to pulling the building up with an urban edge and so forth, but our client indicated at that meeting, and we would do so tonight, that if that were the case, and if this site were zoned in such a way, then CBS would not enter into the market at this particular location. And we don't say that is a, is a threat, but we say that from their perspective to understand that there's only so much they're gonna be willing to do to have this particular site within the city. We've agreed with the staff that we're gonna do something other than a prototype building elevation at this location. And we've submitted elevations to the neighborhood that haven't had any comment from the neighborhood. We are gonna be in discussions with staff regarding those elevations, and our site plan is a work in process. Again, the staff recommendation has submitted request that we relocate the existing utilities. That's not a problem. I think you saw from one of the photos, there's some gas and electric lines that are through there. The applicant is perfectly willing to work with Mid-American to provide alternate service, that's a fairly common request. There are no public utilities in the form of sewer or water that would have to be a challenge on this particular site. The turnaround is obviously understandable, and we're proposing that the alley, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, would not dead-end into the building, that there would be an opportunity to access out to Second Avenue. The site plan is a work in process that we're working on with the city. The latest iteration is, is shown here, as Bert has proposed it, and we're still working on the open space issues and landscaping issues, but we understand those things would all have to be completed. I think the, the question for the commission is not zoning tonight, nor site plan, but simply is, is the request to vacate the alley appropriate under the criteria established by the city? And we submit that it, that it is. We're not closing off the alley, we're providing the alternate access means, and it will enhance and allow the site to be redeveloped in, and be put on the, the tax rules. I think by and large, and I don't pretend to speak for the neighborhood, but the feeling was with the exception of Dr. Campbell, the neighborhood would be happy to see something productive used with this particular corner. And Dr. Campbell's gonna relocate, we hope, to the site at Sixth and Madison, where before the Board of Adjustment next Wednesday, on an exception request he has to make that site viable. But we believe what we're doing here is in compliance with the existing ordinances, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Chris, I, I do have a question, I know it's one that Will has brought up. What's the situation with respect to the potential for any national historic district overlay being in this particular piece of property?
If that happens, that's something the applicant will have to deal with, but through so far the investigation that we've done on the site, going through the pre-app process with the city, discussions with the city staff, private discussions that the applicant has done, we have not revealed that as an item that we would have to deal with. My understanding of the national historic district is pretty much along the lines of what Mike has said, and if there's no federal dollars involved, then that creates a different circumstance, and we're of no local historic designation that's been done on the site. So, we will, we'll deal with that in the, in the process, and again, we have to establish all the contingencies enclosed on the surrounding properties. We're dealing with three property owners here that we're assembling the site on, Dr. Campbell being one, the Spizello interests being two, and third, the Denny Elwell interests, and they're each sort of dependent on the other. And the way this works is FEPH, the FEPH entity is part of the application, they assemble the site and then turn it over to CBS once all the due diligence is, is complete. So, our action here tonight, or your action requested tonight is only a part of the whole process, there's still more work to be done, and we'll continue to investigate that, and we appreciate that issue being raised as a, a possibility this evening.
Chris, my concern is that if, if that is in fact in place, and CBS says we're not gonna build as a result of that, we now have engaged in abandonment of an alley that nothing's gonna happen on. I mean-
Yeah, I think the city's protected in that regard, because we've indicated we're not gonna accept conveyance of the alley, that's why Iowa CVS Pharmacy was made a party to it, until such time as Iowa CVS is willing to do it. And I can assure you that Iowa CVS is not gonna go forward on this site unless they have all those contingencies solved. I think Mike or Mike Kelly can speak to the aspect that we, we don't think we're placing the city in a position where they'll get something that they're, they're not intending at this location.
This is a recommendation to the city council, so there's no formal action on it. You're not vacating the street tonight, you're recommending on it. Condition number three, in the staff report references there will be no conveyance unless those conditions are met, so the site plan will have to be approved by council before any conveyance would take place. So, basically, the, the proposal would have to be acceptable to council before any conveyance would occur.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Seeing none? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Likewise, please come forward. Likewise, seeing none? Chris, you don't need rebuttal for yourself, do you? Okay. And we're gonna close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I understand.
We're gonna move this by committee? Will, do you want to add anything to these recommendations?
I'd like to know what enhanced urban edge means.
It's like at Dolls, Will.
Pardon?
It's like at Dolls. They put a black fence or something around the edge and landscaping and stuff to make it seem like an edge when it really isn't.
We've also talked with the applicant about installing or working to get the Highland Park streetscape extended in front of this property along, along Euclid Avenue as well. So, it's very similar to what we did on the Dolls, where we asked for the Ingersoll streetscape to be installed in front of the building. So, once again, the council will have to approve the site plan for the property, and so those things will be all taken into consideration at the time council considers conveyance of the property.
This same thing happened in, in the Union Park neighborhood on the corner of East 14th and Guthrie Avenue, and Iowa Health proposed a really quite lovely facility that's very well patronized, and we're glad, and we're very glad to have it. But the plan was the same thing as this. And you drive past it now, and you drive past it, and it looks like any other place outside of, you know, the city.
You know, Will and Will, I agree with you.
I'm just complaining.
I, I understand. All, all we're asking about here is whether or not we're willing to abandon the alley.
Yeah.
Greg?
I'm, I'm gonna jump on Will's bandwagon, and I, I just think it's sad, sad, sad that this was left C2 zoning by the neighborhood, when it could have been changed to NPC and we would have been protected. There's been proof all around town that pharmacies can come in, have a frontage on the street like they should, and survive. CVS doesn't want to, because they don't want to, and I agree that because it's C2, they should be allowed to, but I, I don't have to like it. I, I agree with Will, we, we are losing what we are every day. And every day we allow it, we lose a little bit more, and pretty soon we look like West Des Moines.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Three of us. It's Will, myself, and Greg. For all the reasons stated, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Moving along to item number five, I, I'm on the right track here, right?
Yes.
Request from Anthony Holt for review and approval of a site plan. Holt Warehouse Storage Lot, under design guidelines for vehicle display lots on property located at 20 Southeast 16th Street, to allow display of forklifts and similar equipment for sale, in addition to use for contractor equipment storage yard. Bert, you're, you're on this one?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair members of the board or commission, this item is just for a site plan, for a vehicle display lot. They're wanting to sell forklifts and equipment, so since they're selling it, the city classifies that as a vehicle display lot. It's in an area zoned M1 light industrial, it's just north of the railroad line, across from pretty large warehouse facility, and then just south of East Court Avenue, some other, from some other warehouse and auto repair uses. As you can see from the aerial, right now it's pretty much all gravelled. The gravel goes right up to East 18th Street, and it also spills over into this undeveloped city right-of-way to the south. This site plan would take care of those issues, it would restore the sod along East 18th Street and provide the curb along the south property line to prevent the encroachment onto the city right-of-way. Here's the site plan that they are proposing. These are the two existing buildings. They would be removing an existing vacant house here, and then replacing it with paving and another storage building. You can see the landscaping that they would provide along East 18th and East Court. They would take this area now that is all this one gravelled apron and reduce it into two paved drive approaches, so the site plan does a good job of cleaning up the area. They are deficient on some of their landscaping, but it's nothing that can't be overcome. Here's a photo of the site, as it appears today, this is looking south from East Court Avenue. This is looking, I guess, southwest from the corner again. This is how it looks today from East Court Avenue. They would be, the areas that are used for storage on the site plan would be screened, so you wouldn't have that appearance. This is the house that would be removed. This is looking across the site.
Is Holt already operating this that we're looking at?
Yeah, they are operating the, the gravelled area that would be replaced with paving. And we did not get any consent cards back. We've recommended approval of the site plan subject to these conditions, and I won't take the time to read through them, but just the standard conditions, so. Any questions?
Any questions? CJ?
I have a comment on this, on the landscaping. It's, says it's 41 Norway spruce, six foot tall. I was at a conference or seminar, or whatever you want to call it, this week- I was at a conference or seminar, or whatever you want to call it, this week, sponsored by the City of Des Moines, was one of the sponsors, and it was made note that conifers no longer will survive in the Iowa environment. Formerly, there was one on the list, and they've removed that, and along with that, 41 of any species in a row is not called diversification. So, I would like for David Yon to look at this and make some different recommendations. This would be a waste of the money for the person doing it.
Just to clarify, the 41 are scattered along the front property line and then in this area at the southwest corner of the site, but you're right, they are proposing 41 of that species.
Which is not diversification.
Any other questions?
Are those trees existing, or would they be added?
It would be added.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Anthony Holt, 20 East 18th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We bought this site in 1997, we've been operating a forklift business since then, the second existing building was built in 99, and what we wish to do is come in compliance, and also, the third building would be added, would be for repair and maintenance of forklifts and machinery. We largely sell machinery, we don't exactly sell cars, but some of the machinery is too big to even store in buildings, and you've seen his pictures, you've seen the conditions of what it is currently, and we would like to get it paved, and we also are a roll-off dumpster business, roll-off to Des Moines, so we'll also be storing dumpsters on this lot and operating the dumpster trucks, and we do do some heavy trucking, as you might notice, because we have to bring in forklifts and machinery of various sizes. He noted there was one house, we're actually removing two houses, the picture of the gray house is the first house coming down, that's right here, there's also a second house at the proposed building. My neighbor's Court Avenue Auto, who is, his body shop is here, or panel shop, and then the next is his house, which is not occupied by anybody, it's just got storage in it. As far as the landscaping goes, we're more than willing to, for recommendations, we don't exactly want 41 trees to die either.
Lot of money for nothing.
So, we do have some existing landscaping that will stay, as you see in the front of the building, that will stay, and that back hill, of course, has some on it, and we'll put that together. I guess we just, we run a multiple facet business, and it's very hard to put us in one zoning, and it's been kind of a difficult thing for us. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Anthony. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Likewise, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Have a motion? Joanna and Greg are both moving in. Any discussion? Greg.
CJ's addition for, to work out the 41, or however many evergreens to some other reasonable, however that has to happen.
Okay, can we, you all right with that, Joanna?
Oh, yeah, I'm assuming that's what, because he said he didn't want 41 trees to die, so I'm assuming that would happen anyway.
So, 41 is something else other than?
Or a mixture.
Or a mixture.
Just visit what the numbers are.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Acclamation, Kathy. Six has been continued. Seven is a request from Come and Go LC, represented by Nick, half mill, half hill, to rezone property located at 6304 Southwest 6th Street. The subject property is owned by, I'm sorry, my contacts aren't, Southwest 9th Street. The subject property is owned by Ford G Properties LLC, did I get that right? Bert, are you presenting on this one?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Time to replace the contacts.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, this item is a request to rezone a two-acre site to a PUD planned unit development to allow a new Come and Go gas station. The subject property is near the corner of Army Post Road and Southwest 9th Street. There's a Hardee's that's being redeveloped on the area just to the south, the Hardee's building, previous Hardee's building is right here, the new one that's being built is, goes east-west, just south of here. The PUD is submitted, shows the convenience, almost 5,000 square foot gas station convenience store on the middle of the site, and then there'd be approximately 10 pumps to the east of that along Southwest 9th Street, and then they'd have a pretty wide landscaped buffer area to the west, they would also have their stormwater detention basin. They're proposing, they want to have an eight-foot tall fence along the west and north property lines to buffer the properties joining to the west and north. The PUD also provides an access easement for the Hardee's property to access across the site and vice versa, and then we're also recommending that this PUD provide future easements for the property to the north if it should ever redevelop commercially. Here's a picture of the convenience store that would be built, and you can see it would have entrances on three of the sides, including one on the west side where they would have some off-street parking to the rear of the building. Here's the canopy. They are requesting the ability to have a 19 and a half foot tall canopy with another two and a half feet of height for these three Come and Go logos that would be on the north, east, and south sides of the canopy. They are proposing one monument sign along Southwest 9th Street, and dumpster enclosures constructed of the masonry and steel gates. Here's a picture of the site as it appears today, it's mostly just undeveloped land between the pools and spa store, and then the Hardee's. Another photo. This is just the Hardee's under construction to the south. The cards, we have one in opposition, catty-corner to the northeast, and then one in support to the south across Army Post Road. As part of the PUD, they are requesting the ability to get a Class E liquor license at this convenience store. Since it's zoned, it would be zoned PUD, it would not be subject to the typical process for getting a conditional use permit to have a Class E liquor license through the zoning board of adjustment, so the PUD has to grant them the ability to have the ability to apply to the city council for Class E. Staff has looked at this as if it were applying to the board of adjustment for a conditional use permit. One of the requirements for such would be that they're at least 150 feet from any church, school, park, or daycare. They do not meet that requirement, there's a church just to the northeast, there's another church that's currently renovating this building across the street to the east, and then there's interest, I believe a church is going to be using the property to the north for a community center use there as well, but given this one church here that's within 150 feet existing, they do not meet those requirements, so we've recommended that they not be able to have a Class E liquor license. They would still be able to get the wine and beer permits through city council, but they would not be able to apply for the Class E liquor license. Staff, other than that, staff has recommended approval of the request, subject to a few changes. Part D is approval of the conceptual plan subject to the following, one, provision of a cross-access easement for the property to the north, two, provision of a pedestrian route from the store to Southwest 9th Street. The plan that they've shown proposes to have the pedestrian traffic routed first to Hardee's and then west, we're asking that they also provide a pedestrian connection along from the building to the north and then to Southwest 9th Street there as well. The third condition is provision of notes on the landscaping, or on the conceptual plan that indicates the dimensions of the building and canopy signage, four, that the fuel canopy columns be wrapped with masonry material that matches the primary building. Right now, they're just wanting to have metal posts, no masonry materials. Five, provision of a Class E liquor license on the subject property, and six, just the addition of these notes that would deal with the Class B and C beer and wine permits, so. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Joanna?
The canopies, are they taller than normal?
Typically, they're allowed to be 18 feet. They're requesting the ability to have a 19 and a half foot tall canopy, one end would be 18 feet, but the other end would be 19 and a half feet due to a slight change in grade on the site, but then they're also asking for the ability to have these signs be additional two and a half feet tall, so overall, the tallest point would be 22.
The same request was made on Southeast 14th Street, Southeast 14th Street at Deal, and the commission granted that request, so the store, the canopy are all exactly the same design as the one that was just built at Deal and Southeast 14th.
That one is a highway that he just referenced, this one is not. Army Post Road is a very busy street, it used to be a highway, it is no longer a highway, it is not treated like a highway. It has also, this piece here has also, right, catty-corner across the street, another gas station.
Joanna, I'm going to ask, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm wondering if you know the other gas station, was it allowed to have the 19 feet in their canopies, do you know?
Are you talking about the one on Southeast 14th Street?
No, on Army Post and Southwest 9th, right, catty-corner from this one.
The city didn't have that 18-foot restriction until about two or three years ago.
So, it probably would.
It predates, it predates the current ordinance.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Questions work for me, if you have discussion, we've got plenty of time for that.
Okay. I'll wait.
All right. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Colby Jones, 6400 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa, 50266. Mr. Chairman, commission, thank you very much for your time tonight. As Mr. Ludwig mentioned, we are doing the exact same store canopy that we did over at Southeast 14th and Deal, nothing will change. All of our new buildings that we're doing are LEED certified, and there were three things that I wanted to bring up tonight. Number one, I did want to address the liquor issue. When we got comments back from staff, and we did our own research on code, we did realize that we were within the distance of the church that code was not allowing liquor. With that, we are okay with pulling liquor from the store, so we can take that off the PUD. You know, we feel we're a responsible retailer, we typically don't like to be categorized with some of the other convenience stores in town, however, we do want to be cognizant and respectful of code, so at this time, we're fine taking liquor off. The other issue that I wanted to bring up was, some of you might wonder what we're doing with our old store, we are at Army Post Road and 50th. With that store, we will use restrict it, so another convenience store does not come in, we will also remove our tanks and take down the canopy there, and then we will retenant it with either an office or retail user. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we did hold a neighborhood meeting, at that meeting, there were some concerns, one of them being the fence height. We had proposed a six-foot privacy fence facing the west side of the property. Listening to the neighbors, they had requested going from a six-foot to an eight-foot privacy fence, as well as having the two neighbors to the north of us having them fenced off as well. In our PUD submittal, we did comply with the neighbors' requests, and we did go to an eight-foot fence on both the west side and the two properties on the north side. With me tonight, I brought our civil engineer, Sarah Bauer with Olson and Associates, and she'll be happy to answer any technical questions and hopefully take any tough ones, too.
Thank you, Colby.
Thank you.
Any questions?
General information, how many Come and Go stores are in the city of Des Moines?
City of Des Moines, I'm not quite sure, in the Des Moines MSA, we do have 49, and within Des Moines, I'm not quite sure of the exact number, sir, I'm sorry. I would guess 15-ish maybe.
And I think I picked up from your comment, you're trading out stores here, more or less.
That's correct, so we would be...
I mean, updating and upgrading, but eliminating one location in lieu of another.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? CJ? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application, please come forward in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application, likewise, please come forward.
Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Donna Grange, I own the property at 6301 Southwest 10th, which is just directly behind the proposed Come and Go gas station. We do have some concerns about putting a convenience store right in our backyard, although we don't live there, we do rent the property, and it is a residential property, we're concerned about the increased noise, the increased traffic that will obviously come around the block in many circumstances, so that will increase the traffic on our street and the trash. Although, we understand Come and Go would keep their property cleaned up, the trash that gets thrown out of the vehicles as they go around the block and so on is going to increase the amount of trash in our residential area. Further, we have safety and security concerns, and I think that particularly has been answered tonight, that they have requested an eight-foot fence, proposed that rather than just a six-foot. The water retention pond, we've got a concern regarding the overflow of that pond, and the, people from Come and Go have told us that the overflow is, the pond is designed to accommodate a 100-year flood, of course, my response was, did you live here in 93 and 2008, and so on and so forth. Our property is very flat and level, and the door to the home there is right at ground level, so if any of this overflow comes over into our property, it's going to come in and it's going to come right, go straight down into the basement, so that's a big concern. I was told that if it does overflow, it would be designed so it would overflow to the pavement and go south towards Army Post Road, but I'm not really sure how that would happen, as Hardee's has had to, in their new design, they've actually had to raise the ground level to about four or five feet at the west end of their property, so I don't see how, if they've raised the ground level four or five feet, and then we've got the overflow pond, and I'll kind of try to show you, show it to you here, here at this overflow pond, and right in here, they've raised this about five feet, they're actually putting... They're actually putting a block wall in here. So if this is raised and the pond overflows, I don't see how it would go to the south, but more likely to the west or north or anyplace. But I don't see how that could happen if we've had to raise that ground level five feet. So that would be a concern. Also, if this pond does not actually empty out, are we going to have increased bugs, mosquitoes, and so on? Another issue is decrease in property values. Come and Go people told me, yeah, usually your property value is going to go down around our convenience store, but we're putting in a $4 million store, so that should be okay. It might be okay to the city, because they're going to get increased taxes and revenue off of this property. I want to sell this property in the next 10 years. I don't want to see my property value decrease. Further, I've got a concern regarding possible loss of rents. I don't know that my renter at this point is interested in living with a convenience store in the backyard. As lease comes up, I may lose my renter, and therefore, I'm in a position of losing rents because of this. The 19-foot canopy, Southeast 14th and Deal may have one, but they don't have any residential properties around there. They raise that canopy, the lights are going to be raised up higher, and more light comes in and filters out into the residential area. And then the final concern is the liquor license, which it sounds like they've taken care of that. But with the correctional facility and the mission slash shelter just within two blocks of this area, there's a lot of reason why we wouldn't want alcoholic, you know, hard liquor sales in that particular convenience store. And those are our comments, and we appreciate the time to be able to let you know what they are.
Good smoke. Any questions? Tim?
Donna, you've seen their store on Southeast 14th. It's a beautiful store, I will say. It's quite lovely. If, what would you like to see? I mean, this is two acres of land, and next to it is a warehouse that's been vacant for two years. What would you like to see there?
Well, this vacant property, what you call a vacant property here, they have come in, that building that's right there.
That's not custody, it was not pools, right?
Right, but they've come in, they've started to put landscaping across the front. They've landscaped the back. They're working on the entire parking lot. It appears there's some type of a church that's going in there with also a roofing company. So this is not just land that's just sitting any longer.
You aware of that, Mike? Is there a business being run there?
We're aware. There's a request. What would you like, where that property is that Come and Go wants to build on? What would you rather?
Have there?
Well, the park area was quite nice, and the school that was there prior to that was okay. So I can't tell you what I might like in there. I know this is progress and we move forward, but as far as being the homeowner in that area, I've got concerns about the progress that's happening. Because I am going from a completely green space, total green space, to something that's concrete and buildings and lots of light, lots of traffic, and you know a lot of noise.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Seeing none, you need some rebuttal time. Colby?
The only thing that I would like to say is, the detention pond has been already designed and approved. That is in there, so we don't foresee any issues with that. And as far as the lighting, we are at zero lot lighting, so zero lot line lighting.
When you say it's, that's a joint detention pond for both the Hardee's and the Come and Go, correct?
Yes, sir. And it's already been permitted. And then also, of course, we have the landscaping materials to help shield from the lighting, although it is a zero lot line lighting. So that's my only comments. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Colby, I think you have a question over here.
Joe brought up an excellent point. Southeast 14th and Southwest 9th are two different thoroughfares, or they're streets. Why could you not lower your canopy? Would it be possible, zero light? It puts off a lot, it emits a lot of light, and there are residential homes closer to this proposed site than there is on the Southeast 14th one. And I see that being a problem if I was a homeowner next to this.
Sure. If you have not been to our Southeast 14th store, sir, at night, I'd encourage you to go see it. Again, we do use LED lighting. It is a zero lot line lighting site. And the reason why we are, you know, a foot higher than code is because of the grading changes there.
How does what?
The grading change?
You go north to south across the site, there's about a foot of grading.
Yes, sir.
This site is also, compared to the street level, is lower than the Southeast 14th. Southeast 14th is actually sitting up on the hill at Deal. This site is basically even at that grade with the adjoining right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Joanna, I'm going to give you a shot. You want to go motion, and also we'll listen to what you've got to say.
You want the motion first?
Please.
I would move this, however, I would like to see a couple modifications.
That could be part of your motion.
Okay. I honestly would like to see the canopy lowered, so that your signs, you know, aren't sticking way up in the air. That's slower traffic. You don't need highway height on this location. I also see you competing size-wise, visually, everything, from the station that is catty corner across the street from you. And I would not like to see, you're going to stand out anyway because of your coloration. If you're going to do the same store as on 14th, you're going to stand out more. The one catty corner from you is, it's made of brick because they wanted it to have some feel for the fort, for the historicity of the place where it's built. So I would like, I would like to see you lower your canopies. Your signs are fine. I like the round signs better, and I like square ones anyway. They just are easier on the eye.
What height do you want it lowered to?
I'd like to, I can't see that those signs need to be any higher than totally 19 feet.
I think if you're going to recommend something, it should be code rather than picking a number out of the air. I would suggest, if you're wanting it lowered, I would suggest a motion that it comply with code.
Okay, then code is 18 feet, right? And those signs wouldn't be much higher than that.
They'd be two feet above that.
They would be two whole feet. Well, I'd still rather it be a little lower, so code would be sufficient.
18 feet?
18 feet. And also, you're going to have 20 filling stations. The one across the street from you has 18. That just seems like another competition in a, basically residential area. You, right behind all of this commercial are homes. So this really is a residential area, although this corner is commercialized. So I'd like to see it cut down. Just those two filling stations would be enough for me.
Joanna, under the design guidelines, the requirement is based on the open space that they provide. They are meeting that design guideline as far as number of open space per pumps.
So I'm not, I'm asking for something?
I would question us suggesting fewer pumps when it's allowed under zoning.
So I'm not really asking for anything that's feasible.
I would suggest that we stick with what the guidelines are.
Well, I think, Joanna, if you want to reduce those, you can say you want to reduce those.
Well, I'd like to see them reduced, because I don't want to see the competition between...
What do you want it reduced to? You've got, one, two, three?
There are 20 on there, and there, across the street is just 18, so the seats...
So you want to reduce to 18?
Two, four, six, eight, 10. That makes it kind of funny. How does the other one? I think I'm asking for too much on that.
That's up to you. It's your call.
Okay. I'd like to see the canopy lowered.
Okay.
Primarily, mainly because it's...
The canopy's going to comply with code, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I really would like to see that. And it's going to be beautiful. It's a nice store. I have nothing against your design or anything. It's light, bright, and nice for a gas station to look at. So I don't have a problem with that, but I just, I just think raising it all the way up in an area like that is not necessary. You don't need the height, and I'd rather not see it.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question, and it's probably for staff. They've agreed to pull the request for a liquor license. How is that handled citywide, or does that have to be included? I know they're good corporate people and good citizens, but I would like to know how the city handles that. Can they come back in a year and say, oh, we've changed our mind?
We've recommended that it be a condition on the PUD, so it'd be a zoning restriction on liquor sales. So if they wanted to change that a year from now, they'd be back in front of the planning commission, the council, for a zoning amendment.
I guess I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess I have a question of staff regarding the height of the sign due to the grading being an issue there. Is that going to be a problem for you to put the canopy in? Because on the southwest corner there, as we're talking about, it has to be, it's going to extend higher.
Colby, could you answer that?
Well, they certainly would be coming there to trouble the field, right?
Basically, yes. It would be a little difficult if we did 18 on one side, if it was still possible to go 19 at that foot where the grade drops. Would it be possible, then, to just have the sign not higher than that 18, you know, actually be level and not, you know, bump out above the canopy? Could be compromised in that way? Just way, it wouldn't go that additional two feet above, you know, that 18 or 19.
What she's talking about is the grade level raises and that's...
I'm picturing it in my mind.
Maybe if we take that and, you know, this way, it wouldn't protrude another two feet above?
Well, it would probably look better if all of them were situated like that, all the way around.
Yeah, well, yes, most, we would do...
Rather than having them all bumped up to two feet, just all of them lowered, because I think it would be odd if you were going to be putting them like up.
Correct. So we would...
So as I understand it, what we're talking about here is the grade would start at 18 and go to 19, but we'd bump down the signs, is what you're suggesting?
Correct. We'd bring the signs down, so it'd be just straight across on the top of the canopy.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's, that sounds better to me.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, that sounds like it's a good compromise.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So everybody understands the motion? All those in favor? We don't have to break that down, okay? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? One, two. Okay, passes. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to number nine.
Number 10. Or nine.
Nine, it was 10 and 8.
Yep.
Number nine, number nine, request from Hawkeye Tac, you know, you got Jack, okay. Request from Hawkeye Tac and Western Supply, represented by Donald Hanson, for review and approval of a site plan amended under Design Guidelines for Vehicle Display Lots, the property of 706 and 720 East 30th Street, to allow expansion of the existing horse-trailer sales display area. Bert, you have this? Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the request would allow the existing horse-trailer display lot to be expanded to the south. If you remember last December, you approved a site plan that extended the vehicle display lot partially onto that property to the south. And with this site plan, they would now be able to remove the house and then expand the display area where, through the area where the house is right now. So the property is located on East 30th Street, just across from the I was, the fairgrounds. It's located on a commercial corridor, Zone C2, on the east side of East 30th. Here's the site plan that they are proposing. Again, from this point north, has already been approved by the commission. Last December, you approved the site plan for that area. So the expansion of the site plan would allow for this area right here. There's a house here that would be removed, and then they would have some display areas on both sides of this new drive approach from East 30th Street. This is the existing conditions. She, as you can see, there are seven mature overstorey trees in this area here. The municipal arborist went out and took a look at those and determined that five of them are in fact diseased or not worth saving. But they did point out that two here are, do appear to be salvageable or retainable. And the applicant, I did speak with him before the meeting, and said he is willing to retain those two trees as well. So that would be one change to the site plan. So I'm guessing he would, rather than put these two trees here, he would retain those two existing hackberry trees there. Here's a photo, some photos of the site, and this is one of the trees here that would be retained right along the south property line. That's the house that would be removed. Then this would be the other tree here that would be retained. The other trees on the site are all split or have other defects. This is just the existing lot. You can see the trailers are currently along the...
And the house, sir, that's the one you would propose to remove.
Yeah, that is the house that would be removed.
Looks better than pictures that it actually is.
Hey.
So staff has recommended approval of the expanded site plan. Again, it's Zone C2, so it is a permitted use. It just has to meet the Design Guidelines for Vehicle Display Lots. So we've recommended approval, subject to, again, the standard conditions. And number six could be revised to include a provision that they'll retain the two hackberry trees along the south property line.
Are we adding trees, Bert?
Well, there are two existing overstorey trees that...
Right, but are we adding trees to offset the loss of those other ones?
Since the five that are being replaced are damaged trees, they're not required to be mitigated. However, I would point out that the site plan does add quite a few overstorey trees, so chances are, they would be more than mitigated anyway.
I just couldn't tell from the diagram. It looks like trees on here, but it looks like brushes, too, so I'm not really sure. Any other questions?
I have a question. Who determined that these trees are hazardous and needs to be removed?
David Dion went out there and...
Thank you.
He had sent an email on Friday.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bert. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Don Hanson, 720 East 30th Street, Des Moines, Iowa 50317. We just want to expand our trailer sales to increase the business. We already have trailers in an area that you approved last December, and the business is growing way faster than we thought in the trailer sales part, so we want to expand that, take down the old house. There's, obviously with a hundred-and-a-half-year-old house, there's some issues and some other We are planting trees. What you see on the plan there are trees to replace the ones that are being torn down. And the driveway, there's an existing driveway on the north... And the driveway, there's an existing driveway on the north side of the house, but it's really narrow and it's too close to the other drive. That's why we're moving that drive down 30th some. And the one off of Lion Street, we're just straightening it up so it goes straight instead of, at an angle. So it moves over a few feet, and we're planting trees in that green space there. Any questions?
Any questions? CJ?
Obviously, you've visited with David Yon about the tree removals that you're going to be doing. Are you the one that visited with him?
I didn't talk to him. He came out, and I wasn't aware that he'd come out and looked at the trees. But some of them have, there's one that's forked and it's split almost down to the ground.
I accept his recommendation. However, I would like to see you visit with him about these conifers and fir trees. Because you, again, I think you heard me say before that there's no diversification here, and they're not recommending.
We planted thirteen of the conifer trees with the December deal. So I think we're only adding a couple of pines.
That's twelve here.
I think some of that might have included the December trees. I'm not sure.
CJ, if I could clarify, the city forester, or city arborist, doesn't normally go on to private property to evaluate these trees. When they came in with the plan, it showed removal of six trees on there. There was no documentation in the submittal as to who had made the determination those were hazardous. So we did ask, staff asked David Yon to go out and look at that. He did. I would really prefer that they also submit some documentation, but, I mean, David has looked at that. David does get the site plans and can comment on those, and we can certainly work with them to do that. But it would be staff contacting David. David's, it would be our staff that would contact him on those species recommendations.
You will be doing it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I don't want to plant trees that are going to die either, but, I mean, that's what we spec before, so.
Any other questions? Don, before you go, I live over there. I go by your place every single day. I've been in that place a number of times.
Good.
My concern is, is this it? I mean, I don't want to start encroaching, we're already going down 30th Street. Are we going to start encroaching into the neighborhood?
I don't own any more land there, so.
Not yet, right? I'm just concerned, I'm sure some of the neighbors, I'm just concerned, and I'm sure some of the neighbors are concerned, because that's residential.
Sure.
Understand that, right?
Sure.
So are we done?
I think so. I don't have any further plans to go. And like I say, I don't own any more land. And I'm not aware that any adjoining land is for sale, so.
Okay. No, it is. It really is. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, and maybe for staff. When you give him a vehicle display lot, does that give him, he could put anything he wants out there, vehicle? Or can we put on a friendly amendment? So it doesn't turn into a car lot?
It's a vehicle display lot, so it's sale of vehicles. They could convert that to a car lot in the future.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
My name is Sherry Cooper, Fairground Neighborhood Association, 2838 Logan Avenue. And I just wanted to say that we would like to have a continuance so the neighbors could be aware of it and be able to see the plans and get their take on it, because we haven't had any meetings on it. I just actually got the letter.
Let me make sure I understand this. The Neighborhood Association was never contacted?
I got letters this week is when I got them.
But you never got, I mean, Don didn't contact you, and.
No, sir.
Is he part of your association?
No, sir.
Why not? I'm sorry.
I don't know, because we've sent out newsletters and we're sending out on the news media, newspaper, advertising our meetings. So I don't know. I hate to be honest with you. This is the first time I ever met him today.
Ms. Tripp, I might, I just want to confirm that a neighborhood meeting is not an absolute requirement. We mail notices out ten days in advance of the meeting. When the post office delivers or when a receiver picks up their mail to respond is not part of our code requirement. So we do mail this notices. We also mail out notice to property owners within 250 feet of this. And we don't track cards on that, but the notice invites them to come in and look at the site plan and comment on that. So obviously, it's expansion of an existing facility that was just approved in December, so.
And I understand that, Mike, but certainly it's been the tradition of this board to make sure that the neighbors get noticed so that they can have a meeting with, hopefully, a good neighbor that's there, that's their businessman. You have anything else?
I just want to say that this is my first year of president, so I'm really proud of this. First scary one. But, you know, we want to be good neighbors, and we're also working on a 30th Street corridor to make it more pedestrian friendly, because we're right across from the fairgrounds. So in the process of working on that as well. We're just in the beginning stages of it, but we hope to have it done in a couple of years. It needs it so bad on there, on East 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Don, you want some additional time?
Again, thanks for having me. We got our notice at least a week ago, if not 10 days ago in the mail. And apparently, we have two neighborhood associations. One is recognized by the city, which is this group, and another one called Fairground Neighbors, and that's who I've been dealing with. I didn't know we had two neighborhood associations, so. I want to be a good neighbor. I want to communicate. I offered to go to their meeting and address any questions, or they could meet at the property and we can go over anything. But I would really like to keep the thing moving forward, since you don't have a meeting in two weeks because of the Fourth of July. We're going to start running out of time this winter or fall before winter comes to complete the project, so.
When does your neighborhood meeting, next one?
We don't have one until October, but we'll have a special meeting.
Mike, when does this come on, council?
It does not.
Oh, this is.
The site.
Site plan. You're right.
I have a question. You said you went to the other neighborhood association?
I've talked with them.
Okay. You've talked with them, and have they given you support on this?
They didn't have any problems with it.
Okay.
I, even though, like, but Mike, it's not the law. I think some, you know, the city of Des Moines is known for having a very, very strong neighborhood association group. And I think it's fair for her to ask for a continuance so they can find out. If nothing else, it's common courtesy, I'm going to be building in your neighborhood, and this is what I have planned to do. So I.
Next meeting's July 19th.
Well, they're going to have a.
My son gets married like the day after that, so we're kind of tight.
I understand, yeah. Your call. Do you want to continue this?
I'd rather keep it moving forward and meet with the neighbors. You know, I'll offer to meet with them anytime they want to call a meeting. But I don't know if, did they have issues with what we're trying to do, or just questions?
Honestly, I can't speak to the neighbors. Does they know about it, or not?
They should have gotten a letter in the mail with an opportunity to comment.
We mailed notice to 250 feet around the property and the neighborhood association.
Thank you. Going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Tim?
I move for a continuance. I just, I feel like it's not fair that they don't have an opportunity. I mean, I don't know what's fair and what's not fair, but again, I think they should know what's going on. Everybody should be on the same page.
And you want to continue to July 19th?
Well, if his son's getting married the 18th, I don't think that's going to work. Day after.
Which is a Friday before.
I guess I'll, you know, I'll ask the neighborhood president, would you like to, I don't know how to, to move it forward, and I don't want to stop the progress either. I know he's mentioning the fall, but I'm sure the state fair is also on your mind.
Right. Around that, the streets, and have a big iceboard there.
Your motion.
Well, I guess, I would hope that you two will hook up after this meeting and set a date and start talking.
You're not wanting to continue now, or?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I take it back.
We have a motion. Greg's moving staff. Okay. Any questions? Discussion?
I would just like to say, sometimes I think neighborhood associations are depended on to operate like businesses. And I know at times that the mail isn't picked up on time, and the meetings are not timely, and these things just pop up. And volunteers, the people who are volunteers, good volunteers are stretched. And I think sometimes that happens. But I'm going to vote to move staff, but I still think consideration needs to be given to neighborhoods to allow them time. And maybe it's that we need to take a look at the timing we send out the letters. Because quarterly meetings is usually what neighborhoods have the majority, I think. So it's very difficult for volunteers to get things together, so I would just like to make that comment.
I would like to make a comment also.
Really?
Mr. Chairperson, I guess I want to be encouraging to the person who has taken on the responsibility of the new presidency of a neighborhood association, because they are vital to our city. But by the same token, I can appreciate Dan's business and the fact that it's a good business and it's growing. And sometimes it just seems like we sit here at this table, but out there in the actual city itself, the businesses and the neighborhood associations, it's not anyone's fault, but it's somehow the communication is lacking. And this is not the first time. We've encountered this several, several times on a lot of businesses and neighborhood associations that are not aware of what the right hand and the left hand is doing. So I just would like for him to be able to move ahead on it, and I will be voting for to move staff.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving staff, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. Okay. Thank you, Don. It passes. Yeah, I would suggest that. And you know, frankly, Don, it sounds like a good organization for you to join.
I think there's a boundary line, and we notify both when there's, when they're on a boundary line. He met with the one he's in. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Director's report.
Real quickly, once again, tomorrow planned activities, the 26th, which is, I guess, next Tuesday, there will be a speaker series number four at the Polk County River Place Building. State, it's a state of our plates in central Iowa, so, is the title. Also, the week of July 9th is a speaker series number five on St. Louis Greenways. Has to do with a lot of how they've managed green space in a jurisdiction, or I'm sorry, multi-jurisdictional format. Includes state boundaries, county, city boundaries, and hopefully, we're going to get some good ideas from that. That is the week of July 9th. This one doesn't have the specific date. July 16th, there would be one who's Lee Fisher, CEOs for Cities. And then August 2nd, there's an outreach series at the World Food Prize. And Shelley Potisha from HUD will be the speaker at that meeting. So Shelley's the deputy director of HUD will be present at that. And as you are well aware, HUD is a sponsor, funded this whole regional planning effort. So I really encourage you to do those. I think we emailed you this flyer that had those dates on it, so I encourage you to attend those. Secondly, the council will be having a work session on Monday morning. That, one of the topics on that is the presentation on the analysis we've done on liquor license regulations. They've, there's currently a moratorium in place on the liquor, Class E liquor licenses. And so staff will be making a presentation on that. And then finally, just a reminder, no meeting on July 5th. So that's it. Thank you.
Mike, what's going on on CIP? Do we have anything coming back on that?
The CIP, the current CIP just got approved by the council, which the P&amp;Z submitted their letter back prior to the budget hearings. So it would just be the continued schedule.
R and L, Greg? And Greg, thanks for covering for me last time. Our meeting was successful, so hopefully, I'm hoping.
Just one thing.
Anything else for the good of the group?
Just one clarification, that the work session is just that. It's not a formal action by the council. But on Monday night, should they agree with the recommendations that are in the presentation, we will be asking them to extend the moratorium for another 60 days. So we can actually write the ordinance, proposed ordinance change, and then that ordinance change will come before the full commission for a recommendation to the council.
Just so everybody else knows, staff's done a great job working through this, because it's kind of a tangled mess. There's a whole bunch of options about how to kind of corral the liquor sales. And right now, if that's all it is, is just a bunch of choices that they could go one in many ways, and so hopefully, they'll know what's under it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.
Be careful what you ask for.